Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 2021 Candidate Forum for King County Council, Position Three, and the Samamish Water District. The event is presented by the Kiwanis Club of Issaquah, the Issaquah Branch of the American Association of University Women, and the Issaquah Cable TV Commission. I'm Kathleen Friedman, and I will be moderating this forum along with Connie Fletcher. Over the next 60 minutes, we will hear from three Samamish Water District candidates and the two candidates for King County Council District Three. The Water District candidates will only give a two-minute introduction and will not be asked questions. The King County Council District candidates will be also given a two-minute statement, and then they will be asked to respond to questions. Those responses will last up to 90 seconds, and the candidates will hear a single chime when they have 20 seconds remaining, and two chimes when their time is up. After the first candidate responds, the second candidate will also respond, and then the first candidate will have a 30-second rebuttal. Again, two chimes will indicate when there are 20 seconds remaining. One chime will ring when there are 20 seconds remaining, and two when time is up. Finally, each opposing candidate will have a one-minute closing remark. Before we get started, I'd like to thank Anne Crabtree, Tina Blondino, Brad Butler, Connie Fletcher, Jerry Tolstad, and Tim Smith for suggesting questions and otherwise helping us with this event. Opening statements will begin now for the Samamish Water District, Position Three. We'll begin with Knav O'Tell, followed by Anne Vo, also running for Position Three, and then Mary Schustoff, who is unopposed and is running for Water District Five. Let's begin with Knav O'Tell.
Thank you so much, Kathleen. First of all, I wanted to thank the Kiwanis Club, AAUW, and Issaquah TV for hosting this forum. It's a great service that you're providing to the candidates by allowing us to speak to our skills, experience, and passion. It's also a great service for the community so that the voters can make informed choices. My name is Knav O'Tell, and I'm currently serving as a Commissioner for Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. While water and sewer services may not be top of mind for most people, they are essential services that we all need every day. As a 30-year resident of Samamish Plateau and as a customer, I care very much that Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District is well-managed and responsive to its customers. Utilities are my passion. I have boots-on-the-ground experience in the utility industry, including as a Chief Financial Officer, as a Deputy Director overseeing operations, engineering, and infrastructure planning, and for the last 10 years as the Utilities Director for the City of Bellevue. I know what it takes to provide high-quality water and sewer services to our customers because I've done it for City of Bellevue for the last 25 years. As your Commissioner, my top priorities have been and will continue to be that we protect our aquifers so that our customers can enjoy safe, high-quality drinking water, that we're planning for the long term so that we can provide reliable utilities not only for today but for future generations, and that we have affordable rates such that we're able to provide these life-critical services to all of our customers. I'm excited to leverage my utility experience to give back to the community in which I live by continuing to serve as Commissioner for Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. I thank you for your time and your support.
Thank you very much. Now, Anne Vo.
Hello, and thank you. Thank you, Kathleen. Thank you, Connie, for moderating tonight, and thank you for the invitation to participate. Again, I'm going to echo Knav's endorsement of the Kiwanis Club, the Issaquah Branch of the American Association for University Women, as well as the Issaquah Cable TV Commission for giving us this space in this forum to share our thoughts. My name is Anne Vo. I go by the pronouns she/her/hers, and my family and I have lived in Samamish for the last 24 years. My kids went to Eastside Catholic. We trained at True Martial Arts, and we are parishioners of Mary Queen of Peace. I've been an active member in the community, volunteering with the City of Samamish, the Samamish Chamber of Commerce, the Fourth on the Plateau, and also as a board member for the Sammy Awards. And even though I volunteered and supported different community efforts, I felt there was more that I could do. So I'm running for this board position to serve the Samamish community that I care so deeply about. I want to use my time and talent to actively participate and give back. I believe environmental stewardship is a key part of this position, and I know that what we decide on the commission is going to have great impact. So working along with the other commissioners requires listening to others, collaborating, having tough conversations where there are competing priorities, getting alignment, working together to accomplish a common goal, are skills that I've honed in my work as an executive coach and organizational development consultant. I know that the Board of Commissioners do not act alone. We need to have our community members engage in the water conversation, and any decision that's made be communicated back quickly and as clearly as possible. So my goals are to protect Samamish's water resources long term. I will always advocate for clean, affordable water and incorporate technology where we can to help gather and refine data to help us make better decisions. I welcome your thoughts and feedback, and will make myself available so that I can represent your voice and keep Samamish clean and green. So please, I hope I can count on your support come November 2nd.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to hear from Mary Schustoff, who's running for unopposed for the Water District Number Five.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you, Kathleen, for being so great as an outreach person for this event and coaxing me in. I just thought about it, and I would like to... My name's Mary Schustoff. I think I said that, but I'd like to say why I run for Water Commissioner. I've served as Water Commissioner for 18 years, and we've lived in this community for about 28 years now. I raise my kids here, you know, our family, my husband and I. So irregardless of that, I'm a Water Resource Engineer, professional engineer, Water Resources Engineering. And I've been involved in wastewater and water industry really since high school. So like my senior project in high school was wastewater treatment, et cetera. My brother is a Water Resource Engineer, and I really value him as a model in my life. So little background, before we moved up here, I was working for, let's see, California Department of Water Resources in Southern California, doing the water inventory for Southern California, which is a large area. It's very dry, and water balances for 20-year perspectives, and water inventory, where's the water? Where's it coming from? How it will be used, and how long it'll last, et cetera. I thought it was a good niche, you know, to serve my community, being a Water Resource Engineer, to, like, let me think about this, oh, run for Water Commissioner. And so for the last, I've run once, twice. This is my third time. I really want to thank the community for their trust in me, and I think it's well-placed, actually, I'll say that. If anybody's having problems with the district, please call me 425-922-3607. We're really there to make sure that the beautiful, pristine aquifer that I knew when I first moved up here will remain so. We have some challenges with that, but that's our goal. I serve in the district because I think it's an incredibly well-run operation, and I think the people involved in the district are full-hearted and dedicated to making sure that the water's clean, efficiently delivered, and affordable. We have a 100-year asset management program where your grandchildren will not see a raise in prices because we didn't plan for the future. All our assets are numbered. We know the manufacturer, the placement, the parts, the life expectancy, and we know what's in front of your house, and it's being planned for now. So that's one of our big goals there, and we've achieved that. So I just asked for your vote again, and it's such an honor that this community would trust me with this position. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all of the candidates for introducing yourself to the audience. Now, I'm going to turn over the forum to Connie Fletcher. Connie?
Hi. Thanks very much, all of you, for being here tonight, both virtually and in person, and we really thank the candidates for being with us tonight. We will begin with the two candidates for King County Council, Position Three, Kathy Lambert and Sarah Perry. You will each have two minutes to introduce yourself to the audience. We flipped a coin, and Sarah, you'll begin with your opening statement, and then Kathy, you'll have the first opportunity to respond to the first questions. Sarah, will you please make your opening statement?
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much, Connie. I appreciate that. Hi, my name is Sarah Perry, and I'm running for King County Council, District Three. And I want to thank my club, the Kiwanis Club of Issaquah, and the American Association of University Women for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm a small business owner and have worked in nonprofit and university settings for 30 years, managing budgets from $3 to $20 million. As an enthusiastic coalition builder, I'm also known for my expertise in creating strong foundations of civic engagement and engagement to build progress in both local and statewide communities. I'm running for county council because we need a champion who embraces diversity, economic opportunity for all, and will fight for affordable housing and transit and against climate change with the urgency required to protect all of our communities. We need someone who will not only listen but will bring results at this critical time with a forward-thinking vision. Bringing our communities together and moving forward, learning from what the pandemic is teaching us, requires new skills, new connections, and innovative thinking. I'm grateful for over 200 endorsements, including the Seattle Times, U.S. Representatives Kim Schreier and Susan Delbene, Attorney General Bob Ferguson, our teachers, our firefighters, our healthcare workers, Sierra Club, and many more who have watched me deeply engage our communities over the last five years, and you can see all of these at electsarahperry.org. Our campaign priorities are protecting our open spaces, water, forests, and farms, providing effective transit connections and alternatives, ensuring safe communities, and supporting small businesses. Our campaign is fully engaged for these final three weeks. We're grateful for the support received from just over 900 individual donors, and we are out canvassing every day throughout the district to make sure we reach every voter. I'd be honored to earn your support as well. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Sarah. Kathy, would you make your opening statement, please?
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here, and thank you for sponsoring this event and making sure that people are well-informed about what's happening in their government. So thank you to each of the organizations. My name's Kathy Lambert, and I am the King County Council member. I have had the honor of this position for 20 years and have been able to accomplish many things with the help of many, many groups throughout the entire county. The county district is the largest, 1,107 square miles, and it includes part of Redmond, part of Woodinville, Samamish, Issaquah, Fall City, Preston, North Bend, Soqualmie, Skaycomish, Duval, and Carnation. So that is urban, rural, and suburban, and each of them have their very own personalities. So getting to know each of them so that you can represent them well is a wonderful opportunity. So this year has been an amazing year getting through to this point in our COVID. In the early days of COVID, we spent a lot of time on Zoom calls and talking with your chamber and also your businesses and your city. The chambers, we work closely, and we got more and more information coming in to talk about what they needed. I have worked on many, many projects for the county. I have helped many projects with setting up the Department of Local Services, been on the Budget Committee. King County has a budget of over $13 billion, the budget, and so I've worked on large budgets, and we have maintained the best credit rating for a government that is possible. King County has won many awards in the environment and all kinds of different awards in criminal justice and in our technology. So we have done many things that many places in the country look to. And so I would like to tell you a little bit more about what we have done in preserving our farms and having farm plans so that each of the farmers can work with the ag communities as well as the fish and environmental communities to make sure that we have good, healthy food. And personally, I am a mom of two step, two fostered, and two biological children, 18 grandchildren, and when I had spare time, I wrote poetry and books. So that's a little bit about my background.
Thank you very much, Kathy. And you get the first question tonight. What are the most serious challenges facing King County, and how would you prioritize them?
Yes, well, the very most serious priority right now is dealing with the sheriff's issues so that all of our citizens will be safe. We have the opportunity as well as responsibility from the passage of Charter Amendment Number Six to be able to write what we want our sheriffs and our sheriff's deputies to be able to do. There is, because we are a home rule charter county, we have the opportunity to change what the state law sets. In the state law, it says that there are six things a sheriff should do, and we can either accept all of them or part of them, and we can add to them. That is going to be very important, and I think it will be important to have an experienced voice there to be listening to what everybody says about that. We have a task force that has gone into looking at what are the qualifications in the next sheriff as we hire that person, and they came out very clearly in saying that they wanted the sheriff's office to remain, the title to remain, and that they wanted to give input on who the next person was. So that's going to be very big on how do we get the manpower, person power, all across the county. Is that the end already?
We have 20 seconds more.
Oh, okay. One of the very big things that will be happening there is that when we find out in a couple of months how many officers will not be able to stay on because they have not been able to get their shots, that will be a real big challenge.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Sarah, what do you consider to be the most serious challenges facing King County, and how would you prioritize them? Let's see. I've got a dead screen here.
Here we go. Yeah. You know, housing and homelessness is a really serious issue and transit as well. I think these are really important issues, and of course, economic recovery, public safety. One of the things that I am very excited to look at and work toward is to ensure that we have enough safety options, alternative, sorry, transit options and alternatives for those that are wanting to take advantage of light rail and I-90 corridor and make sure that they have the opportunity to really take advantage of public transit because that is what is going to impact our environmental goals most directly. Also, housing is just critical. Nobody can, I could not afford to buy my home again. Our kids cannot afford to live here. We have a million people moving here in the next 10 years. We're the second-highest, fastest-growing district in all of King County, and we have to make sure that we have housing alternatives and options available for our folks that are our teachers, our grocery clerks, our firefighters, our police officers. We need to make sure everybody has an opportunity to live, work, play, and learn in the same community. So, you know, to me, the housing is a critical issue. We are at a crisis, and we have to do whatever we can to make sure everybody has an opportunity to have a home that's safe and that we are safe walking in our communities as well.
Thank you very much. Kathy, you've got another 30 seconds if you would like it for rebuttal.
I would just like to expand because I got really into the sheriff's office because that's such an important thing that we're working on. But affordable housing, I'm on the Affordable Housing Task Force. It has come through on a number of occasions, so that is important. And I'm really into dealing with our waste and what that means to our climate and our greenhouse gas, and looking at options to our landfill. I also am very interested in transit and expanding, which we are doing. Saw the new plan yesterday, more hours out to Issaquah, and that will be very exciting. So making sure that our transit and eventually when sound transit gets there, that they coordinate.
Thank you very much. Sarah, this question you start with. Revenue sources are not meeting the responsibilities of the county. What are the options to increase revenue?
We have some funding that's infused right now, some one-time funding coming from our federal support and state sources, and, you know, we have funding needs for housing. We have funding needs for roads. We have funding needs for transit, funding needs to meet our environmental goals. And so there's a lot of work to do, but we also, at the same time, are a very wealthy area, one of the most wealthy areas, and I think that we can address these issues. I think, you know, obviously, the funding we were using through the gas tax for our roads and bridges is dwindling. There's a lot of debate over whether folks want to have something on their car that determines the mileage where they're going. Is that too much of an invasion or not? There are a lot of bright minds working on that, and I am looking forward to stepping into that conversation and engaging well so that we can have a solution to address the, what, one-third of all King County unincorporated roads that are in our district out of all of King County. So we have a very strong responsibility to address this, and I'm looking forward to working together with the one-time funding and also sustainable funding sources to address these.
Thank you. Kathy?
Thank you.
Yeah. Would you permit me to repeat it? Revenue sources are not...
I am very interested in making sure that we prioritize. Yes, I mean, first of all, we need to prioritize and really look through what are we spending our dollars on, and I think our auditors have come up with some ideas with that, too. And with the roads, once the gas tax continues to decrease because of inflation, there was no inflation factor when it was created. So we may be looking at mileage charge or some of the other options and making sure that whatever option is selected is one that people will feel comfortable with, with their privacy, but also it has to be something that is spread across the county when we're talking about roads. We also have needs in the mental health area. I am very interested in changing how we bring mental health in more frequently. It used to be that you had to be incarcerated or through the jail system to get mental health, and we've been working on making mental health available more quickly through the community courts, which I started, and also more childcare. Childcare is such an important asset for our working families to be able to afford to go to work and know that the children are well taken care of and making sure that we get more people in that are qualified on a pay scale so that we get highly-trained people dealing with our children and their young minds.
Thank you very much. Sarah, would you like 30 seconds for rebuttal?
No, thank you.
This is going to sound familiar, Kathy, but you get the first go at the next question, which is regarding the Charter Amendment. How would you implement the role of the council in defining the scope of the duties of the sheriff?
So yes, that is a very big topic. I would say that we need to keep the RCW intact. I don't think we should be different from any other state. In an emergency, we need all the officers, if they were to come, to know exactly what the rules are, the command structure, all of that. So that is something that I would keep intact. I also put an amendment onto this budget to expand RADAR. RADAR is a program that helps partner counselors with the police. We've asked the police to, and having them have a counselor for the situation, but then also, these people see and know things that none of us want to see some days, some horrific things, and having them have a counselor to be talking to as they're going on to their next call, I think, is important. So adding that, and then I think, you know, working more with our ability for our sheriffs to have better training in de-escalation and helping them with more tools than they currently have right now. And then I'm going to tell you a kind of strange one. I think we should really be looking at the weight that they are carrying because a lot of them are getting back problems, and so we need to relook at preserving the health of these officers so that they can protect us for a very long time. So I think looking at the safety of every single person in this county because we back up every other department also.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Sarah, how would you implement the role of the council in defining the scope of the duties of the sheriff?
Thank you. I feel like this is a critical, critical piece, and I want to be very clear that I am not supporting defund police. I never have, I never will. I have had occasion to experience critical need for protection earlier in my life, and it is indelibly impressed upon me, the need for response time and protection. So I will always support our police officers. I will always support protection and response time and funding for that. I will also support strengthening our behavioral health specialists and supporting our police officers and our substance use disorder specialists so that our police officers can focus on protection, and we have others there who are skilled in supporting needs for behavioral health and for substance use disorder. I want to strengthen that across the board because we all need this for our members of our family and our friends and our community members. These are people we love. We are all called to take care of people together. So I will be a strong supporter of all three of those. We need diversity, and I will be a strong supporter of diversity so that we make sure that people who are most impacted are actually participating in being part of the protected community, and so I will support that as well. I feel very strongly about the new reforms with de-escalation, and we need to provide the training, get the training, funding for training for sheriffs. For behavioral health right now, some sheriffs, some deputies are angels walking, and they have training, and they understand how to work with those who are most needy in our behavioral health system, and others just simply haven't received the training. So I want to make sure that our deputies, our sheriffs, our police officers are receiving the training they need to perform at the highest level for the occupation that they stepped into to serve and protect. I'll be a very strong advocate for that and to make sure that they're getting what they need so that everybody is treated with the skills that they need, and because they have the skills, they've been provided with the skills for the job at hand. So I feel very strong advocate for that.
Thank you very much. Kathy, you've got 30 seconds for rebuttal. Would you like to take that?
I would just add that we're having several problems that we need to be aware of, and one is it's very hard to find mental health counselors. We are really having a crisis in doing that, and it is very important because over 50% of the people have said that they have experienced during COVID some type of mental health concern on their own. So that's important. And then we also have to work with the legislature to get more slots at the training centers. We're only guaranteed a few, and then if there's extra room from across the state, then we can put more people in, but it looks like we're going to lose enough officers that it will take us quite some time, a few years, to get the officers trained, and it costs about $180,000 to equip and train an officer.
Thank you very much. Sarah, you've got the next question about land use. Preserving open space and concentrating development in areas of municipal services is a laudable goal. However, it's becoming increasingly difficult to cite schools within the urban growth boundary. The new middle school located below Talus Development is a good example of this. While the school district purchased land for school construction in an area anticipated for growth, it was outside the urban growth area, and the county did not allow it. What changes, if any, do you believe are needed to provide for adequate land for school construction or other essential services?
You know, this is an excellent question. I am a very strong supporter of the Growth Management Act. I really believe deeply in maintaining growth in our urban boundaries, but this did happen 30 years ago, and we weren't as worried about land at that time. And one of the things that was not included in the Growth Management Act was contiguous land, conversations about contiguous land space. And so we have cities that are, like Duval, for example, that is creating development, and the developers have to mitigate traffic and one thing... And the developers have to mitigate traffic and one thing and another for the city of Duval. But unincorporated takes a great impact of the traffic that happens from that development and yet had no impact, no say-so. And so the same kinds of things happen with traffic that happened with schools, the, the, the development of the population. We need to have conversations between the cities and unincorporated areas to make sure that we're working on what the best possible scenario is for everybody. I'm very familiar with the Talis situation. We, we've been living in that right down the way. And it's really a struggle. It's really painful for people, and everybody has some very legitimate concerns. And so I will be an advocate for bringing these voices together. The schools with, with the environmental community, with the business community, the cities, really having a focus on regional leadership. Because this is not the only area. It's across, it's across this whole district. We have five school districts in this district. And it's a big, big issue for us. So my focus will be to bring the, a regional conversation together, the state, county, cities, local and civic engagement as well. We want to have a full conversation about what is best for our communities and move together with a full agreement on where we're going. Even though we have very different and conflicting issues at hand, we can do this together. We just have to make sure that we have a regional conversation that's not just right in front of our nose, but that's going out ten years. What are we doing together? So I'll be a strong advocate for bringing that conversation together.
Thank you very much. Kathy?
Well, thank you. That is an important conversation, and it's already been had. It was had at the state level where all the other counties were able to cite their schools that they were. The only county that cannot do that is King County. So we are in a different situation now than all of the others. Schools and school buildings are very important to develop this community spirit, a community gathering place. Schools are someplace where people know and, and feel is an important integral part of their community. What I tell people is if you put a school in the rural area at point A and you put the, another school at point B, or where children live at point B, it is the same distance to go from point A in the rural area to that point B in the urban area as it is from B to A. And so they said, well, you know, it will hurt the roads. The kids have to go on those roads one direction or another. So it's, it's a argument that we really need to be looking at. Putting kids on a bus for long distances has many impacts. It has impacts on the environment, it has impacts on the roads, and it has impacts on the children themselves. Because a kid on a bus has a hard time getting started in the morning.
Thank you. Sarah, would you like another thirty seconds for rebuttal?
No, thank you.
Okay, let's go on to transit and light rail. And this is Sarah, you start with this one. Issaquah experiences the impacts of continued growth in, in East King County. Long-range planning includes light rail between Kirkland, Bellevue, Issaquah, and is currently scheduled for revenue service for 2041. Do you support this project and what plan, if so, what planning should begin now?
Yes, I definitely support the project. I support light rail. I support our, our strong metro as well, electric fleet. We have to plan right now. It, it seems like it's far away. It's not. And, you know, part of our challenge is that we have four thousand unique vehicles going in and out of our Snoqualmie Valley every day. We need to do some work on that. We need to make sure everybody can use I-90 corridor, that everybody can use the light rail. So we have Redmond with light rail coming in next year or the year after. And there are people very close to Redmond that, that there's no, there's not enough parking and there's no way to get there for them conveniently. We need them to have shuttles. We need to reroute those buses that were taking the space of light rail. And we need to make sure that we're getting them into our different communities, into Trilogy, Redmond Ridge, Issaquah, the I-90 corridor. Making sure people are getting used to public transit and finding alternatives and options for public transit. And, you know, that is how we meet our goals. That is how we meet our environmental goals. That's how we make sure that we keep things affordable for folks. It's a very, very important plan.
Thank you very much. Kathy?
Thank you.
Support the project?
I do support the project. I also support that we coordinate with the buses so that we can build the infrastructure of riders. So that more and more people, as we're approaching 2023 and my neighborhood, 2024, and also 2041 in Issaquah, that we have the buses increasing so that it builds up the ridership. I was at a meeting the other day with Sound Transit and Metro, and they are coordinating together and doing their planning. So that at the end of the plans, they know exactly when this bus is going to be moved to do the last mile. And then the Sound Transit line will come in. They have done a great job of coordinating, and I am so glad that they are not being seen now as competition, but they are being seen as partners to make sure that the buses are bringing the people to Sound Transit and especially the last mile. When you talk about places like Trilogy, they, people need the buses as quickly and closely to their home as possible. We need to really evaluate where are our senior citizens, where are people that have special needs to make sure that the last quote-quote mile is as small as possible. And making sure that people have an easy way to get up on those hills of Union and Novelty and Education Hill in one part of the county, and then you've got a flatter part of the county in Issaquah, which makes it a lot easier. And also having Sound Transit be able to bring and put on more cars more rapidly to get more people into these areas and more frequently also helps with people being able to rely on mass transit. And potentially, if they have two cars, getting down to one, or maybe even no car.
Thank you.
More affordable.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Sarah, would you, would you like thirty seconds for rebuttal?
No, thank you.
Okay, we're moving right along here. Kathy, this is your first, this is your first take on this one. Then affordable housing. King County Council has a variety of strategies to address affordable housing and homelessness. Which do you support? Are there existing strategies you would recommend be discontinued?
So this is a huge, a huge topic, and it is at the very basics of human survival. Everybody needs to have a home that they can go to. And whether that home is a duplex or a triplex or a single family. And we need to plant out, or apartment, whatever, whatever kind of house it's going to be, that it's aesthetically pleasing, that the infrastructure that is there is adequate. Nobody wants their toilet to back up. So when we're putting housing that is multifamily housing, we need to make sure that it is in a place where the infrastructure is there. A huge project was put in, and I won't name where, but in our district. And then they discovered that the plumbing wasn't good enough, and they had to tear it all, um, straight up and do it. So making sure that we have the infrastructure underground. Nobody likes to think about what's underground, but the infrastructure needs to be there. And then we also have a goal of forty-four thousand houses that need to be built by the year 2024. And in order to do that, we have to have about forty-eight houses being constructed a day. And I put together a meeting.
Twenty more seconds.
Okay, in September of two thousand and nineteen with builders, bankers, planners to say, what do you need to do to be able to start construction? And two of the things, because I have not much time, two of the things were that we needed to increase the ability of the planning department. And I put four point three million dollars to do that.
Thank you. Sarah, affordable housing, what do you support and are there existing strategies you would recommend to be discontinued?
Yeah, I am very interested in many different forms, all the different forms of housing that we can. And I want to maintain the character of our, of our communities. I'm not interested in, in rezoning everything and being dramatic and drastic in these ways. I'm very interested in maintaining character of our communities and ensuring that we have many different opportunities of, for housing connected to transit hubs, connected to, to areas where our zoning allows and where density allows build, build in that density so that we have the opportunity for people, you know, whether they're grocery clerks or, 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 you know, firefighters or teachers, that folks can, can live in these communities, seniors can age in place in these communities. Where, you know, our senior communities are so important, and we need to make sure that our folks can stay in these spaces. And so our housing has gotten backlog. People are not moving. They cannot afford to move. They can't downsize. So new families can't come into the homes that exist and so forth. So just doing whatever we can to ensure that we have a multiple opportunities, multiple options for housing. And I know we have eight thousand units, eight thousand housing units coming into the valley floor of Issaquah in the foreseeable future. I know that Redmond, because of light rail, took on the lion's share of housing development for the, for the foreseeable future for the seven cities. And so there's just a huge number of opportunities coming to Redmond for affordable housing, workforce housing for, for different, for new families, for seniors, for all kinds of different circumstances. And I want to see that develop throughout the valley so that everybody can live comfortably. I think there's a way to do that, but again, it needs a regional leadership conversation. And, and there are a lot of conversations that happen from city to city. They're not happening regionally enough. And I know some say that they are, but clearly they're not. So we need to bring that together from a regional standpoint, make sure that we are having a full conversation about where we are ten years from now, what we're doing with a million people coming in this direction, how we can do it well with our roads, with our infrastructure, with our housing, with our transit, with the jobs. They're all interconnected. It's a three-level chess game, and I'm very excited to get engaged in that conversation to get, together leaders throughout the district.
Thanks very much. Kathy, would you like another thirty seconds rebuttal?
I'd just like to say that those conversations are happening at PSRC, and it's with a four-county region. And all the cities just got their growth targets. And so each city will have to come up with how they are going to meet their growth targets. And one last thing, I really want to see homeownership go back to eighty percent from the current sixty percent.
Thank you very much. The county is responsible for management of the creeks and waterways to limit the flooding in rural areas. What should be done to produce actionable plans for mitigation? I skipped this question earlier, but I've got Kathy responding to this one first. Kathy, you want to respond to this one?
Sure. Well, we actually have a flood control district. And we also, in the valley, have Snoqualmie, Snoqualmie Valley Preservation Alliance and also the WID. Two groups that have brought in expertise. The WID group brought in experts from Microsoft and other high-tech companies to be able to, to design some equipment that will actually tell us within minutes of when the flood waters will be coming through, which is very, very helpful. So that farmers and people in the valley will know how they need to get out at certain times and move their, their tractors and their, their animals. So between all of those groups, the Snoqualmie Valley Preservation with the farmers and working with the King County Conservation District to be able to clean the ditches so that we aren't clogged. And there's water, places for the water to go in the flood plains and in the floodway. So I think looking at the plans from the Flood Control District, which are out at least six years. And each of the districts out all over the county have a plan. And our plan was done last year. We worked really hard on it. I had lots of town meetings where people came in and talked about, well, you think it floods here, but I've lived here thirty years and it doesn't flood there. It floods over here. So that we were getting not only flood inundation maps, but also on-the-ground information from people who live there. So we have the plan, and I think between all the partners working together in the valley and across the county with these new plans, that we will be able to do the very best we can to be able to keep our people safe.
Thank you, Kathy. Sarah? Would you like me to repeat it?
Yeah, would you repeat it? Yeah.
Yeah, the, the county is responsible for management of the creeks and waterways to limit the flooding in rural areas. What should be done to produce actionable plans for mitigation?
Thank you. This is a big, it's a big issue, and I've been having many conversations with folks from WID and Snoqualmie Valley Preservation District and John Taylor with Local Services. Now, we, I mentioned earlier this issue of, of contiguous roads and spaces. And our development over these years has dramatically impacted flooding and dramatically impacted our ability to, to offset what we're doing with flooding, with our streets, with traffic, with agriculture, impacts on agriculture. And we really do need an ability for the develop, the cities and the counties to talk about the development as it happens. Again, you know, Duval developed, a lot of folks are driving from Duval to Microsoft. They're going right through that Redmond Ridge area, right through that Trilogy area. The flooding is ridiculous. The traffic is ridiculous. The ag, the agricultural land there is impacted deeply. And this is continuing, this development between the city and the county. The non-conversation that happens is not going to help us do, assimilate well with a million people coming out. So I want to see actually a state conversation, a state law that has us conversate, has us talking to each other and looking at that contiguous space throughout our district over the next ten years when it comes to development. The Simamish Valley is a great example of this. We need to make sure that we are protecting our farmlands, protecting our waterways. If we have flooding that happens all the time, and as I'm out there fifty doors a day knocking on these doors, talking to people over and over and over, I'm hearing about flooding, I'm hearing about these impacts, and it doesn't go away. And when I'm talking to experts over and over, they're saying it's not fixed. It's not on a good path. We need a larger conversation, a regional leadership, regional body that's talking about this that comes from the state and has the county and the cities talking to each other to make sure that our growth plan over the next ten years is taking into account those roadways outside of the cities and between the cities when we're having development come in. So I, I think we have a serious issue to look at here, and I am looking forward to that conversation because it, again, it all works together, and it's not being done well right now.
Thank you. Kathy, would you like another thirty seconds rebuttal?
Sure. Well, there is an advisory board to the Flood Control District, which is made up of many mayors. And the projects are all listed out. We have been putting millions of dollars into these projects over the years. I helped start the Flood Control District because prior, we only had three million dollars a year. And that was not adequate. I could see long-term that wasn't adequate. And so now we have many, many millions of dollars are putting into this, but these are all very expensive projects. And so it does take time to get the money and to be able to do these big projects. So we do have the opportunities for all the cities who have given input and have, we have voted on the plan. So the plan exists, and we are very well aware of the impacts and working on them. But it will be an ongoing problem. Takes a long time for these projects to get completed from beginning to end because there's so much environmental issues that need to be done and mitigated first.
Thank you very much. The next question is on public health. We've learned during the pandemic the importance of the Public Health Department. What changes to programs and resources need to be made to prepare for the future? And Sarah, you get first chance at this one.
I, yeah, I think COVID has, has shone a very bright light on our need to have a health, public health department that is efficient and effective and moves well to the communities that are most impacted, most vulnerable first. So I think across the country, we had hiccups with that. We had hiccups with that here. And, you know, and this is beyond people that, that don't want the vaccination. We're talking about people simply who did not have access because they were not reached out to. They did not have the ability to get to where the sites were. And we can have mobile units. We can have things mobilized much more quickly. You know, I think if we have public health care for all, if we have folks that are, that are part, recognized in part of the system and able to get the basic care that they need, we will, we will be moving in the right direction. I know that the tribes did some incredible, Snoqualmie Tribe did some incredible work out here with the Mary Lou Polly and Eastside Fire and Rescue with a COVID site and deserve great credit for pulling that together. They, they decided together to do that, and, and they were, they were an example of how well we can work together when we are having that dialogue and putting the public good first, the highest protection of the public good first. So I'm looking forward to working together, learning from what we have, taking advantage of the full opportunities that we have now through telecare that have really just been developed because of the COVID situation and the pandemic. There are some wonderful things that we can move forward with, with this insight that we have, and I'm looking forward to those conversations, conversations together.
Thank you very much. Kathy? Thank you very much. Kathy, what changes to programs and resources need to be made to prepare for the future in public health?
Well, we have put together a plan called foundational public health. And I think that was very important. It was presented to the legislature a couple of years ago with Patty Hayes. And when the pandemic hit, they realized that, in fact, she was right. And now we have a system where all the counties can get foundational public health and be able to then build upon that. During the pandemic, we did reach out to minority communities first because we know that their longevity by zip code is 10 years less than the people who live in our zip codes. And so we wanted especially to make sure that we reached out there first. We opened our public health clinics there. You may remember some of the pop-up activities that were in various parts of the county. Because the federal government allocated the vaccines to different areas in different amounts, we didn't always know until a couple of days before the vaccine arrived how many vaccinations we would get. And luckily, we have a wonderful tribe in our area who got a bigger allocation than we had expected. And they were very willing to share, and it was a pleasure to be on those meetings with Issaquah and the people of Issaquah's mayor and director of parks and the emergency person to talk about how Eastside Fire and Rescue was doing things and how they went into Talis very, very early to make sure that our seniors were well taken care of. I think we need to start looking at different populations of people and start saying, what are the underlying foundational diseases that impact these people? Like diabetes not being under control, blood pressure not being under control, obesity not being under control, and really focus on those things so that different populations that have those kinds of issues, other populations have stomach issues, and working with the community to say, what are your basic health issues that most likely you might be more prone to? And then really working to get that taken care of during this time of pandemic, sexually transmitted diseases, tuberculosis monitoring. There were lots of things that got put on the back burner, and that's very important. And the other thing is, we just lost by death our medical forensic investigator, and that was a huge loss. And so we need to be increasing our medical examiner's office to make sure that they can meet all the needs of the pandemic or any other kinds of drugs that are coming into our county to identify them early to protect people.
Thank you very much. Sarah, would you like 30 seconds rebuttal?
No, thank you very much.
We can sneak in one more question then, and maybe no rebuttal this time, just make your comments on it. And this is Kathy goes first. King County recently earmarked an additional $42 million to reduce court backlog. This amount was well below the dollars requested. What can be done to address the backlog on a sustainable basis?
So that was a very big conversation. And we actually sat down with Dwight Dively, our budget chair, and the amount that they had asked for was not for one year. It was for a longer, longer period of time. And in the beginning, it wasn't clear that it was for a longer period of time. So we sat down and said, okay, what do you need this year? What do you need in the next budget? What do you need in the next budget? We tried to balance between our money and county monies and so that we could get enough money for their needs at this point. And, you know, the the Court of the Future, which I worked on many years ago by having the infrastructure already going to be able to do remote hearings, we were able to expand to more remote hearings. And we also were able to do a lot more online in our municipal court so that people can actually not have to take off work and lose a day's pay, but be able to do a lot of their municipal cases remotely too. So both our district and the Superior Courts have worked very closely with the council, and they can survive and keep their community court open in the district court. So the $42 million is a down payment, bringing more technology, more upfront mitigation with people to say, hey, if you can go to counseling and get some counseling or some help that you need, and then come back to the court, we may be able to waive some of these things. And I think.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. I hate to interrupt you. It's good. Sarah, what can be done to address the backlog on a sustainable basis?
Yeah, this is, this is crazy. I mean, we have to fix this. We cannot have this backlog for another 20 years just lingering out there. Why are we trying things if, and 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 bringing people in for crimes if we cannot turn around and fix these things? If we cannot turn around and address these, it's a broken system, and it's not working for anybody. So we have to prioritize this. We have to work with the state on increased workload. There are many different things that we can be doing together, but it takes that conversation and that urgency together. You know, when we talk about, it's the same thing with with, well, mental health. We don't have enough healthcare beds. There are just not enough down-chain systems working to make the front part of it work. And so when you're looking at, you know, all of these response times, making sure that everybody gets the 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 care that they need in the legal system, and then you cannot address the issue, the case is just hang out there and languish and linger. It is not helping anybody. So we have to bring more urgency to this, more funding to this, more collaboration to this to make sure that our system is not broken like this, so that we're taking 20 years to address these issues. So I will work very hard to be a strong voice and a strong vote to bring the urgency forward, to bring the conversation forward for the justice that everybody needs.
Thank you very much. I want to make sure that you each get a minute for your concluding remarks. So Sarah, you made your opening statement first, so Kathy, we'll start with you.
Okay.
Kathy?
I want to say thank you for having us here today, for us to be able to share with you. And I'd like to say that the courts aren't really broken. They were closed for a year, and that was a completely different thing. And putting more money is not always the answer. We don't have enough money to meet all the needs of every single person in this county. So we need to bring in partners. Who are our partners? Our business community, making sure we have a thriving economy so that people are spending money here and the tax dollars can help us to expand. The faith-based community is willing to do many things that they aren't allowed to do at this point. Families, and then upfront counseling with our schools to make sure that children are growing up healthy and strong so they can be self-sufficient. So there's a lot of exciting topics, and I hope to continue being able to do that and bring innovative ideas like community court, courts of the future, and many other systems such as SPURS that help kids to be able to not get a criminal record, but get the counseling that they needed and support with their families.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Sarah?
I want to thank the Kiwanis Club of Issaquah and University Women for hosting this and having us. This is really a great opportunity. You know, we have so many opportunities here to to move forward together. And one of the first things I'll do, what, once elected, is build a King County Council District III Community Coalition with our education community, our business community, our law enforcement community, environmental, our Muslim, our Hindu, our Latino, our African-American, our Hmong community. We have so many communities that we can work with and bring to the table so voices are heard with the policies that we are talking about now, what's working for all of our communities, education in there, faith-based civic engagement, what's working now and what is not touching some of our communities at all, citizens and residents both. Everybody is important throughout this district, and all of our voices need to be heard together. And I also want to see Republicans and Democrats and different parties. I want everybody working together. That is how we will address the issues, grounded in our deep values together and bringing our passions together, not for the fight, but for the movement forward from these very different places. So I just want to thank you very much for the opportunity to be together tonight, and I cannot wait to represent you as King County Council District III council member.
Thank you, candidates, for participating in this event. Your service is very much appreciated. The Issaquah Cable TV Commission has recorded tonight's forum and will be posting it on the YouTube channel for the city of Issaquah. We've had, we'd like to thank everyone who watched this event, and we encourage you all to please tell your friends about that, about the forum so that they can also watch it, and more importantly, to be informed voters and cast your ballot on or before November 2nd. Good night, everyone.